Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
We're having this meeting start at 6:00 PM. We're doing a public budget discussion with the fire district representatives, which is why we're starting at 6:00 rather than 6:30 to allow that discussion to happen before our select board meeting. So, I'll call this meeting to order and we'll go right into public budget discussion. Questions, answers?
You were kind of shy today.
What?
You were just accused being shy.
I saw that.
So, yeah, we've gone through our budget. We're about 3.6% up over last year.
Exactly, it's 266.7.
And where are the majority of it?
Well, we, the majority of it lies within the firehouse bond payment. If you remember, a few years back, we got, they did a refinancing, the state, the bond bank did a refinancing, so we got the benefit of that. This year, we're going back up to our normal $30,000 a year payment, principal payment, so that's 3,500 of it. We've had some increases in our maintenance of vehicles, that's looking like approximately $4,000. So, in total, it's a $9,000 increase we're looking at, year over year.
Do you have any vehicle replacement coming up?
We always do, but, yeah. Our rescue truck will probably be the next thing. We replaced a 1988 tanker this past fiscal year, and our rescue truck will be the next thing that we'll have coming up. Yeah. We are working on a grant, which you never know, but that's what we're gonna try for, the grant, as well as gear, and safety equipment. But, yeah, we are gonna try to replace the rescue with a grant as well.
Will you take a note out for that for 10 or 20 years, or something?
If we don't get the grant, we will be looking next year at probably a partial takedown from the capital reserve, partial note. But, yeah, it depends upon the cost and what...
Right, because our capital reserve, we're doing fairly well with that. We probably won't have enough to buy the whole thing, but we'll be, we'll be very close. And if we have to, in my opinion, if we have to put it off another year, I mean, the truck isn't gonna fall apart. Yes, we have put some money into it, but, and lo, as long as it doesn't explode on us, you know, something major go, that we don't want to put a lot of money into it, then it'll make it a couple of years if we have to.
So, it's not just a chassis, you're gonna get a whole unit?
Most likely, yeah. The, I mean, the back body is, you know, you know as well as anybody, it's aluminum, so it holds up okay, but it still corrodes. It's, I guess, a little better than steel, but it's still, once it starts to get its age, then it just goes, so, yeah.
How many times a year does that go out? It goes out a lot.
Yeah, we had, what, 430 calls last year, and the rescue runs out, well, the rescue calls are probably in the 75% range, somewhere in there. We do have a utility truck that we run as often as we can for the more basic or routine rescue calls, so we don't have to run that truck as much. So, that takes a lot of pressure off from them. So, but, yeah, you know, 350 times a year.
Geez, that's a lot. I gotta give you credit, amazing you can find volunteers to go out for that many calls.
Yeah, I hate it. That's the issue, not only...
Coming down the road.
...year, but coming down the road, and it's not just Westminster, it's everywhere. Yeah, we're very fortunate, actually. Very, we do very well.
Especially because you don't have that many job opportunities around here where somebody could be working in even a construction or something, where they can actually go off it and go.
Yeah, that stuff, they're all the time.
Yeah.
Anybody that's interested in doing, see, call. Yeah, you have three high school students today?
Yep, we do, yeah. Three junior members, which is great, I mean, they're energetic, and if they can get out of school during the day to come to a fire, you know they're gonna be there, which is, hey, that's all right. You know, they're, they're great, they'll run and get stuff, and they're, yeah, it's great fun.
That's what keeps them interested.
Yeah.
How's it worked out with the highway crew? You got, what, two or three on there?
Yeah, there are, and, yeah, I mean, it depends on the call, and we don't expect to get them for everything, you know? But if it's a bigger call, then normally we will, but, yeah, we ought to probably discuss it so that we know exactly what we are gonna get, and what's expected from them, so, yeah. But we ought to probably have a meeting sometime and just discuss that.
I mean, theoretically, they would be some of the ideal guys to have, being, you know, they're in Westminster working.
Absolutely, every day, all day, yeah. And they know equipment, and they run equipment all the time, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be great, if we could come up with some kind of an agreement, and know that we're gonna get a couple of guys, you know, depending on what it is. Yeah.
Do you have any questions of us, where we're at? I mean, this is the first meeting we're gonna have, really, without much input from the school.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? So, it's kind of like, I guess this is the future, it would be just the fire department and the town. So, it'd be interesting to get the people out, to have that discussion in town meeting, number one, because a lot of them are there because of the school.
Absolutely. They'll still be, this year, they'll be...
This, I was gonna say, this is the last year we'll have.
Yeah, exactly.
Probably this year.
With the new merger, there'll be a lot of questions. I think you'll get quite a...
Yeah.
We're seeming like we're getting a lot of questions, we're gonna try to pass them on, because we don't really know.
I would anticipate we'd get a pretty good turnout because of, because of the school this year. It'd be after this year, it's questioned, you know?
Yeah.
You know, we're hoping for a good turnout, from perspective of the fire department. It's just looking down the road, it's making sure we have enough volunteers, and then also our equipment, there's help to the rescue, there's potential for menjen down the road.
Yeah, I mean, you're always gonna have to take care of the equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree with it.
Does the, does the west side get used, in any great capacity or not?
It does, yes, yeah. And went out yesterday, we had somebody that took it out. We don't have a lot of help over there, but we've got a few, yeah, and they, they do okay. Yeah, yeah.
And our relationship with Golden Cross is still good?
I think so. Yeah, yeah, we do well.
That is kind of a marriage, you guys have.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, it's through you folks, as far as the contract, which I talked to Russ about getting a copy of that, but, yeah, they, they do well. Yeah.
Unless we hear feedback from you, sometimes, we wouldn't know.
Absolutely.
So, that, I guess that's why I was asking that question. Yeah. I mean, we signed that contract many years ago, and I know it was quite controversial when we did it, but so far, the dollar amounts have been amazingly not increased over the last 10, 15, 10 years, at least.
At least 10.
Sure. Is there one more year for them?
We renew it almost every year.
I think it's either one or two.
You know, if you could just get a part of that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I could definitely get you one.
Yeah, we, as a select board, we rely on your, your input more than anybody, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if there were big problems, you know, and trying to service that we did have, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I just more the fact that there's only one company out there, and for them to hold their rates down, knowing, I don't, if, if they came back and really had substantial rate increase, what choice?
Then you'd have to put it out there and see, you know, whether one of the big, you know, the AMR or one of them would even be interested in a little area like this.
Right, yeah. And the last time, the only reason they did it is because I remember Paul Harlow was on that, and we negotiated to get Rocket Ham in Westminster, the only way they would even do it, was we had to guarantee that we'd get Rocket Ham. So, so far, it's worked out, from what I hear, and it's just great to hear.
Absolutely.
There's a, on the west side, you're asking about, on the west side, there's a, on Beebe Road, there's the, the Lenadas own the property around the Brook, I don't know if you're familiar with that, and there's a dam, which they want to remove, which is going to interrupt the hydrant, which is the, really, the only, it's not the only hydrant, but it's the best production hydrant that we have over there. So, that is an issue that we're gonna have to, we have been looking at, and we'll have to look at further, so...
The Lenadas aren't there anymore.
What's that?
The Lenadas aren't there anymore.
They're not there anymore. Yeah, so I'm not sure where the dam removal, you could assume it's still happening, but...
It is, it is, and they've done a substantial amount of work. There's at least five agencies of the state of Vermont that are very active in it, and they know that that hydrant is very important to us. They've talked about many different avenues to keep the volume and the supply what you need.
Yeah, a box on the downhill side, or something like that.
Box on the downhill side, to stop the siltation going into it. So, they're, they're still coming up with designs, so, as soon as I have one, I'll make sure I pass them on to you guys.
So, just to make you aware of that, that's one of our...
That wasn't part of our Beaver diverter discussion?
I'm sorry?
That wasn't part of our Beaver diverter discussion?
Beaver seater?
No, we don't have a hydrant up there either.
That's on right, probably on right.
It was, because it's the culvert, but this whole project removes that culvert and puts in a, a box culvert.
This is the one that we talked, okay.
It's the same one that I was bringing up to you guys.
Right. But it's not the one that we decided, that's not where we're putting our...
No, that's right, by the fire station, in the west.
I don't go much, much to us, I guess I gotta get out there.
Ken, are there any, do we have any other ques, any question, any other questions from the, for the fire district reps, or do you have anything for us that...
I don't know, but thank you for inviting us. First for me.
Thanks for coming.
I mean, having that, I think we do need to have that discussion about the expectations of the town crew when there's a fire, and, you know, because you don't want them going every single call, obviously, because they're, that's time away from, from their job, and just like anybody else, you wouldn't want them to. So, it's something to think of, for you guys to think about.
I think we need to have a meeting, because I know, you know, this last year was a little more rockier, when we ran into the problem with who's sanding the road for you guys to get the fire truck up the hill. So, and we have run into, we've gotta be coordinated between the town highway crew and a, and a call out, if you need the road plowed, or sanded, or solved. Obviously, we've gotta be communicating real good, so it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a meeting that we would lay ground of how we communicate.
And they do very well. I mean, we have, up on Sweetwood Hill, we couldn't get a truck there, we had chains, and then they came out, and they had to go up and down several times, just for us to get a truck up there.
Right.
But, yeah, the guys are good. They, they can hear us when we're going out, and if it's nasty, there'll be a truck that will be headed right out. So, yeah, they do well, as far as that goes.
I think we want to keep that relationship, we just, if we can improve it, it's even better.
So, should we have some sort of meeting after all these guys? Set something up?
Absolutely.
Put immediately, so we...
The bike trail, by tour.
Yeah, we don't let it drop, yeah. Yeah, okay.
You know, if there's a storm going on, obviously, you don't want everybody disappearing, go to a fire, or you don't want it to go to, everybody to go to a call where it's on the interstate or something, where you only need one, maybe, or two.
So, you have some sort of protocol, or something?
Yeah, just some sort of a...
I think, I think the weariness was the fact that, if you're on the fire department, and you get called out, and just, for example, Chucky doesn't know it, you know, who, somewhere you gotta be accountable to whoever you're working for, so they say, "Yeah, go ahead", or vice versa, so that there's some control, right?
Yeah. Just the communication is about that, you know?
Yeah.
We don't wanna get anybody in trouble, and we don't want anybody, you know, we don't wanna lose that resource, and you guys don't wanna lose that resource, so it just, yeah, needs to be discussed.
I think it would be beneficial for the town.
See if we can get something going, maybe on April, or if they're about...
Yeah, that's a meeting. Thank you very much.
That's what we'll try to do then.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Ready to go home to your life.
Keep in mind that Valentine's Day is coming, right?
I'm sure you're okay.
Yeah. We've got no excuses now, it's on TV.
Hi, good to have you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Well, we can, we may wanna just keep going with public, with the public budget discussions with the two people that are here.
Maybe I'm here to talk about guns. Take interest?
It could be.
I, I'm interested, but I'm not here to talk about guns. I know, you have to leave. Yeah, it's okay, though. I have a little bit of time. So, I really was coming to try to educate myself a little bit about the gravel pit, and the information that the board has been able to extract from the folks at the town that have been doing some legwork, I think, trying to figure out if it's a good investment. I have taken upon myself, just 'cause I'm a numbers girl, and I think a purchase of $600,000 is a big purchase. I think it is somewhat of a long-term purchase, and so for me, it's something that we become married to, and I wanna make sure that it financially is going to benefit the town. So, I've crunched some numbers myself. I don't see that it's financially beneficial for the town, and I mentioned to Russ that I was questioning a little bit why we were continuing down this road, after my bare bones of kind of crunching some numbers made me go, "Mmm, this doesn't really look like it's something we wanna do", why we continued to go down the road, and he had mentioned that you guys had some financials that you put together, and that there was a savings after, I think he said, maybe seven years, or 10, or something. So, I was interested in just seeing if I was missing something. I'm happy to go through the numbers that I've come up with, but before town meeting, I wanna be able to make sure I can make an informed decision, and that includes maybe gathering some information from you guys, so...
Fair.
That's where I'm at. If you have financials that you wanna share with me, I'm happy to just take them, digest them, and then can ask questions accordingly. I would be happy to go through the financials that I've built in my head, because I've thought about it so much, I can rattle them off, but it's really just a request to try to gather some more information from you guys.
And in actuality, that's, you know, the, the money that we're asking for, at, as an article under town meeting, is basically so that we have more information than we have now. We have kind of a bare bones, you know, we have this, we have an offer that's, you know, been made on the table, and we have some time to negotiate with it. We're looking at, over the period of time, our sand and gravel, where we've been taking sand and gravel out of, out of Demerstoun, has, is gone now, because Demerstoun and Putney went together and they bought that pit for themselves, so we can no longer take gravel and sand out of that. Quite frankly, the gravel and sand situation in this general area is, is drawing up, because it's been used so much. It hasn't gone up astronomically, but as pits keep getting run, run out and get used more, in actuality, probably the state of Vermont just going to, using salt instead of using any sand on the roads has probably helped the towns as much as anything in the long run. But, we're, we're looking at it, we thought it was, you know, it would pretty much do us for probably 17 to 20 years, or that's what our thoughts were, that, you know, before, you know, it was depleted, and that's depending on, of course, if we don't have any hurricane irons, or anything in between those times, and so forth, so... That's really, we haven't done a huge amount of numbers on it, other than...
I haven't even seen, I mean, I haven't really looked at the numbers, because he's just given it to us for now, and I thought, at the last minute, we weren't gonna go to the voters, ask them to purchase this, that's not our intent, okay? Our intent was not to do what we did last time, which was the last-minute spring on a gravel pit, and we took a lot of heat for it, because we didn't have all the questions. I guess, my feeling was to go to the voters, to say, "Well, wait a minute, even would they entertain whether it's this pit or another pit, we first gotta get, we got a two or three-year supply left, that's it, so we have to start working on it." Whether this is the price or the right place, I don't have the answer to that, but to sit and try to spend a little bit of money to investigate that, or another piece, we need to, we need approval that everybody would know what we're there. We would have to come back to the voters at, at some other time to say, "We did it all, and it still might not be", and we might not come back to the voters on this pit, it might be a different pit, but we first have to come and say, "Listen, don't let us go out and spend all this time when everybody's dead set against owning a gravel pit", if that's wherever the answer is. Then we'll be done with it. You see what I'm saying? For us to come and compare the notes, what you're asking for, I haven't even looked at them yet, to know whether it even makes sense or not. It was more of the idea of, do we, as a town, we wanna pursue where we're gonna be with the sand down the road? Because we don't have an, we're not the only town, you know that.
Oh, no, I know that.
Every town's looking for it, and there's a chance that this is not the right spot, the right place, but at least while we're pursuing for this next whole year, if we've, if it makes more and more sense, we would come back with it, or if it doesn't, we just don't come back, or we might come back with a different pit. It's kind of where I'm sitting tonight.
I guess, from my position, if you take the bare bones of material that we have for information, and you do the, the numbers, if financially it doesn't make sense, why would we wanna investigate it any further and spend $5,000, $10,000 on it? That's where I'm struggling. I feel like there's due diligence that you can do, and I'm, I'm struggling a little bit, because Russ said that you had financials that showed us savings, that you weren't...
We haven't seen it as a board.
Okay. It was directed to me, that this board had that information, and wouldn't likely release it, is, is quite honestly what I was told, which is frustrating as a taxpayer, because I wanna make the best decision for the town financially, and in order for me to do that, if there's something that you guys know that I don't know, I would appreciate you telling me. Couple of things I wanna just go back to, which is part of the dialogue that you had. If we are concerned that we are running out of material, it makes zero sense to me that we would buy a pit and start pulling material out of it. If you're worried we're gonna run out of material, we have pits here that we've been pulling out of, that is in close proximity. I don't know what the life of the pit is that we had been pulling out of this year, and I'm not sure where we're getting our gravel beyond, but my point is, the proximity of the pit we've been pulling out of is not any further than the pit that you're looking at. When I look at the numbers, and I graciously gave 170,000 yards of material, the article indicates there's 154. If I go with 170, which was from having dialogue with some people that crush, and, and go to pits, based on the three acres that's there, 170,000 is one number that I was provided. If I take that 170,000, and I know that we use 10,000 yards of material a year, that's a 17-year life to that pit. Currently, we are spending probably an average of $11 a yard for the material that's coming out of the pit that we've been pulling from. You have to pay processing fee of $5, that's gonna give us $6 savings, $6 times that 10,000 per year is $60,000 in savings. If you take 60,000, and you times it by 17 years, it's a $680,000 savings. If we're buying something for 600,000, okay, if you're gonna take it all out of the tax money immediately, and there's no interest to be paid to Mr. Savage, because I heard he was gonna hold paper, then you have 600,000, but you also are going to have the environmental cost of having to at least do a Phase 1, which is gonna run you 5,000. You have to do that before you purchase it. That's $5,000 gone. You're eventually gonna have to take down those buildings that are there, which is more money. You also have permitting, there are horror stories with permitting. I understand there are pits that are there, it may not be a big deal for permitting. If you call the woman in Springfield, she acts like it's roses, and it's all gonna be easy to do. That's not necessarily how these guys that have bought pits have had to navigate through Act 250 and any other permits. I feel like there's this huge unknown with not a whole lot of savings, just in bare bones. So, I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling to be able to support it, quite honestly, from a financial perspective, and from the philosophy of, we're running out of material. If you're running out of material, then you'll buy a pit and you'll wanna sit on it, you're not gonna pull it out of it, because you're gonna wanna exhaust all these other pits that we have right here, before you even touch that. You know, I wasn't in favor of the quarry, but I'll tell you, I'd be more in favor of a quarry for a long-term investment than buying a gravel pit that, with my mathematics, makes zero sense. So, why, why would I wanna support $10,000 of our tax money to investigate something?
And that's why we're coming to the voters. That's exactly why, if we can't, if we can't convince you that it's a good idea to spend 10, then it won't pass, just about that.
But, I, I'm wondering why you're convinced that it would be worth it?
I don't know, I'm not 100% convinced. I just know that we're coming close to town meeting, we're not getting prepared to give you all those answers, there's no way.
Right.
You need to, so, I'm going like, but why drag it on if they don't even want, in principle, to pursue a gravel pit?
But I think in principle, if it was a deal that made sense, then I'm all in favor of it.
Then we would come back to the voters, yeah, we'd come back to the voters and say, "This is the, we think it makes sense, can we, but, I'm more concerned that..."
But you don't bring it to the voters until you say, "Okay, here's the bare bones of the deal." If, if that property was for sale for 200,000, all day long, I'd say, "Do it, don't touch it, sit on it, use your material that you've been pulling out."
All those would be, all those, we'd have, we'd have to come back and convince you that it's worth 600,000. That's exactly what I...
I think, I think, can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, please.
I think, I think probably where, where a lot of this is coming from, 'cause I'm, obviously, people talk out, you know, is that we are feeling like, this is it, this is the spot that the 10,000 is being used for, and I'm hearing from you that it's possible the 10,000 might come back another spot, but this seems to me like a deal that...
We would have to get the permission to pursue this, but if we start into it, and the voters say it doesn't make sense, we'd have to pursue it.
Well, I think, I think I'm with her, I think a gravel pit makes sense. I mean, I was part of helping this whole gravel pit thing in Putney and Demerstoun, but I, I'm not opposed to a gravel pit, I think what we're hearing, I, I'm hearing a little different what, what the 10,000 is for than what we're hearing on the street, and I, this 10,000 is gonna be spent on this spot. That's the, that's the bottom line, and there's no way around that, you have to, if you're gonna pick a spot, you've gotta...
We'd have to spend up and down, and like I said, we could get started on it, if this doesn't make sense, so, I mean...
But I guess what I'm trying to say is, I feel like it doesn't make sense, and so why would you even make that determination? And I really don't wanna have to stand up at town meeting and go through my numbers. I think it would be helpful for the voters to be able to make a decision based on the financial impact. If you're gonna invest $10,000 in, in investment, you wanna know what that investment potentially looks like.
Yeah.
And I feel like I've come up with those numbers, I know what it potentially looks like to me, I feel like the body that is there at town meeting is gonna be wanting those numbers, and when I talked to Russ, he said there were numbers, I'm here, I'm looking for those numbers. That's it. I, I, I don't wanna keep hashing it out, I, I feel like this, I've spent lots of time just...
We just got them together, as I told you, and they haven't seen them.
So, if you start flipping numbers, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, 'cause I haven't read...
So, the numbers that you just got, are, is that it right there?
Yeah, I guess so.
So, we got something that we can all have?
I guess, I don't know.
It's, they're in the packet.
Yeah, but I have not seen, ever seen them. I'm deciding, they just got them tonight.
I just, I feel like we're a pocket account meeting, and you haven't seen the numbers for something, an investment, where we're asking $10,000, that's...
It's, it was, they're again, it was the last minute, and I'm going like, you're not prepared to go to the town to ask for the money, that's the way I felt, but...
So, what, what I'm not hearing is what the other options are. You make, so you make it sound like there are a lot of other options, do we know there are a lot of other pits out there, long-term, available?
So, I guess what I'm, so I guess what I'm saying is, we have been pulling material out of a pit that's local. I, I don't think that we are under the gun to hurry up and buy a pit. I feel like it is good due diligence on the town's behalf, on the select board's behalf, on the highways' behalf, to be looking at potential pits.
Exactly.
I don't think this is the one, I think that if the select board is gonna bring an article to town meeting, the select board should do its due diligence in... um, the select board should do its due diligence in crunching some numbers and make sure that it makes financial sense. So that when we get to this point, there are numbers that could be shared, and there's a reason that we're going and asking for $10,000. And I just, I feel like it's $10,000, there are going to be some people that have listened to dialogue within the community and feel like it's a great deal. They may not be numbers people, they may have not taken the time to actually do a pro forma to say, okay, what does this look like over a 10, 17-year period of time for the town? Um, and I just, I, I feel like that's work that needs to happen before we go to a town meeting. Um, because there will be people there that think, eh, it's $10,000, it might be the greatest thing in the world, let's do it. When I have taken, you know, some time to just crunch numbers and say financially, it doesn't make sense.
All right, can I just ask, is, is it the price, the 600,000 dollars?
Yes.
Other than that, it might be a good idea?
Oh, I think it's a great idea. But I also think that it's a situation where, if you're concerned about material running out in this area, your best course of action is to continue to pull out material from your local pits, which are the same distance that you've been traveling, and in turn, sit on it until you need it. Why would you want to use your material while somebody else is using their material, and then everybody's out of material? I understand clearly, we have no intentions of selling material, which is great, we don't want to. We want to reserve it for ourselves. But you're not in a situation where you're going to buy a pit and then immediately start taking material out of it because you're cutting your throat. You might as well keep pulling it out of where you've been pulling it. I, I, maybe I'm crazy, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me.
No, no, I appreciate you bringing it up, because that was my own concern. We hadn't, we're not prepared to, to, to sell this idea. We haven't done the studies and all that. We're not even prepared to tell you that 600,000 is a good price. You're right, we might have an appraisal and come back and say it's only worth 290,000, I don't know. And that's what I said. But we're going to have to spend something to investigate it, because we reached the point where we can't just do it without going to do some study.
Right, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are going to take some money, you have to do some type of study. It costs money to do these projects, you have to.
Absolutely, no question.
I think her point is, is that if there's just the basic number crunching with estimates on what you think you can get, and that this, this looks like a feasible piece of property, and, and it doesn't make financial sense just doing the basic number crunching, and we all know how projects are, they're never going to come in at the price that somebody tells you they're going to come in at. And if the basics don't make sense, then why don't you ask for the 10,000 and be ready for the next location that might make more sense?
They answer your question, this is, we don't have the basics done. We, some, 600 was just thrown out, not even knowing if there's gravel there, not even knowing what the building was worth and all that. So, but we got...
So, can you understand our frustration?
So, you got to come back down, and so maybe we're going, okay, we're going to pursue the gravel because we got to have 1,700 yards, and we got, and we're going to pay this much. It might be all done, but with almost, that thing's worth is 300,000, I don't know. When you were sitting there in the fall, you got no idea. Because you don't want the building, you don't want the land, you only want the gravel.
Right, right.
And, and like I said, at that point, we're going, I don't know. And all it was, was he was just, there was other towns pursuing it, and he said, let me put it on hold and see. I said, I don't know if my town would even think about buying it, but we can ask.
Well, I know, you have to look into things, there's, I mean, there's no accident.
I'm totally in favor of that due diligence, I think it's very smart to do. Um, I just, I struggle with going to voters and ask to spend $10,000 on something that doesn't financially make sense on paper, based on the information that we have. I read the minutes from the previous meeting, and there's been digging up there that has occurred, the material's been looked at. The veins of that property, I'm sure there's great gravel there. If the purchase price was significantly less than 600,000, then it's a different conversation. But I'm hearing 600,000, the article reads 154,000 cubic yards. I, I think permitting needs to be a concern. Um, I've, I've heard things that it's less than 10 acres, so it doesn't apply. I, I'm, I'd love to see that in writing, I don't, but that's the kind of information that is out to the community, which is going to make them think that they should support this article. And I don't want to have to stand up at town meeting and, and start to talk about my numbers that don't match your numbers. Um, I, I think we should be prepared with a financial information packet of, of what those numbers look like and why this board feels that there should be an article out there for $10,000 to do a further study.
So, this, this has not been available again?
No, I just barely created it.
Why didn't you take this? Take mine, I think it was more...
I'm happy to, I mean, I'm happy to use what information I have to share with anyone, I just, at the end of the day, it's a financial decision.
I've printed enough numbers, I don't want to print it on that.
No, and I appreciate you.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not looking for anything other than make the best decision for the town. I'm a taxpayer, I'm not going anywhere. Um, I understand the, the need for material. Um, I know it's important, but it's, it's also important to make the right financial decision and not, and for the right reasons.
No, we don't have appraisal, we don't have the taxes.
Thank you, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
No, I've got, like I said, I've printed enough numbers on one of them.
We're going to, we're going to jump into our, it, it being past 6:30 now, and we're going to end the public budget discussion for the moment, because it may come up again, let's, we set it prior on.
I'll look at the numbers and I'll call you.
Yeah, 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 no, it's not great, thank you.
So, are there any, any, any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
With the thought to our regular meeting for the moment, and then the budget may come, this may come up again, we can talk about it some more. Um, acceptance of the minutes, January 22nd, 2020.
I move.
Go ahead.
I move with accepted minutes.
There's a, there's just this one little small...
I'll second, so we can discuss it.
Man, Manger instead of manager on the first page. It's, it's just nothing. Do you see it?
Fourth line up from the bottom.
Millie?
I don't see it, no, I'm just making a note.
All right, so I have got, I've got a motion and a second to accept the minutes of January 22nd with a correction to manager and the spelling, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let's carry. Communications and public comments, Eric Sheldon, gun rights for Vermonters.
I do it, man?
Good.
Ladies and gentlemen, we come here tonight to request the board to pass a resolution declaring our town to be an Article 16 and Second Amendment constitutional censure exemption. Uh, we the people of Westminster have taken notice of recent and growing hostility among our lawmakers towards our unable rights of self-defense. This is evident in the attempts to pass legislation for ruining our right to keep and bear arms in defense of ourselves to the state as protected by Article 16 of the Vermont Constitution and the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. Despite our objections and overwhelming evidence to the contrary, law-abiding gun owners continue to be blamed for horrendous acts of violence which continue to plague our country and to a much lesser extent, our state. We live in peace, as all good people do, yet continue to draw the attention of lawmakers to attempt to fix a problem by targeting good people. While there is no doubt that our society does in fact seem to have a problem with violence, penalizing peaceful people for one act to the tool to protect the families who will solve no problems and do nothing to set free more criminals. An unable right to self-defense does not come from man or man's laws. These rights preexist all governments and are part of our nature as persons. The founders of this country and the state of Vermont understood the importance of arms in the hands of the common man as not only a hedge against evasion, but as a deterrent to tyranny and oppression from our own government. Civilian-owned firearms save countless more lives every year than take often the mere presence of a gun serves as a deterrent to violence in the hands of our weakest and most vulnerable. It is for these reasons that we ask the board to adopt the resolution as a symbol of our civil disobedience to those who would attempt to end us defenseless. My ask, please pass this resolution and defend our rights today, thank you.
What we're asking actually is a non-binding resolution. Being a Dillon role state, town can't do anything without state permission. This is more to make a statement, and this is going around virtually every town in the state right now. Within the last month when we started this, we've probably got somewhere around 12 towns so far that have actually passed this resolution. The main reason being, we can't deal with the legislature anymore. The House Judiciary Committee has been playing games with us for, since the second day of the opening session. We go up there to testify, we get scheduled to testify. They changed the bill the night before we're scheduled, which is ridiculous. Right now, there's one bill up there, age 610, that's on revision six. And the scheduled testimony was this morning. We got a copy of the revision last night at about 7:00 p.m. How do you write testimony when you don't even know what the bill says? Currently, the chair of the committee leaves every time we get a chance to speak, which is not cool. And Maxine Grad, she literally gets up and walks out, leaves it up to her vice chair to deal with it. But she sits there in awe when the Bloomberg clones, Moms Demand Action, Guns Sense Vermont, the Gifford Center for Justice, or whatever they call themselves, these are national groups with billion-dollar funding, come in, speak, and help write these bills. We don't even get a word in, we don't get a word in edgewise. And I've been doing this for 22 years. In those 22 years, I've never seen anything like it's been like the past two years. We go into the Senate Judiciary Committee, Dick Sears, Joe Benning, the five members on that committee sit there, they listen to us, they help us out, they're decent. Um, Maxine, literally, well, we're having a public hearing next week? Okay, now, last year we went there, everybody had American flags. She banned the use of waving American flags at next week's meetings, is the kind of person she is. We just want to make a statement statewide saying that Vermont Constitution is the Supreme Court law of the land. And it's very important that we get this done. If for anything else, for our own peace of mind. And again, it's non-binding. Um, it's just a statement, you know?
I have a question to ask you, because, you know, I hear what you're saying, and I was in the legislature, so I know how it works and runs, and it can be frustrating.
Yes, sure.
But, you know, I think what you are talking about is, is a very controversial issue, you know, and, and as you're experiencing up there. But it's controversial in the, in the, we've had requests for, for, you know, putting resolutions. But the request came on a town meeting. And so that it gave people an opportunity to talk about it, to make a decision and vote on it. If you're asking five people up here to assume a position, it's, I think it's really hard to do.
No, that's understandable. And actually, the way it's been going, at least around the state, it's been running 50/50. Some of them have gone to town meeting, some of them being passed by the state, the select board. And again, this is a non-binding resolution.
I know, but it, nevertheless, it's stating a position of the town.
If you want, we can bring it up with your okay, at town meeting.
You don't need our okay.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Maybe it's still just saying that you believe in the state constitution.
Well, actually, I think you can, I mean, since there's no money in the pocket, and you can bring it up at town meeting.
They'd like to be recognized.
Right.
Neither one of you are taxpayers in the town of Westminster.
Yes, we both are.
You are, then you, you could actually, under other appropriate business, be recognized.
I'm down the street from him.
There you go. So, both of you could.
I mean, you, I hope you understand, it's, it's just that, that is the point that is, you know, if we say, oh, yeah, let's do this, you know, this is our position, well, we're speaking for the town. And I don't think that's, you know, I don't feel good about it.
It is, it is a constitutional issue. What they're trying to take away is our constitutional rights.
Well, I think you're making a good argument, and you're townspeople, and I think it would be great for you to bring it up.
Okay, well, it's up to you, either way, we, you know, we're just here, you know, trying to get something done, trying to ask...
Forgive me for my input, and thank you for being here.
Sure.
Um, gentlemen, am I to understand by what you said here that not being in the legislature or not, are they considering additional restrictions even after what the governor signed in 2018?
Yes, right now, um, they're, in the Senate Judiciary Committee, two bills. One of them is going to ban the carrying of semi-automatic firearms in any church, business, or public place. Another one will be a 48-hour waiting period, those are the two bills in Senate Judiciary. In the House, and this is the killer, is going to be up to a 60-day wait before you can purchase a firearm. Literally 60 days. The way that works is, they have a system now, you go through the background check. If it's not immediately passed, the FFL dealer has to hold that firearm for three days. If they don't hear from the FBI within those three days, the firearms dealer can sell you that firearm. Because there's a lot of mistakes, people with the same name, same birth date, things like that. And the FBI needs those three days to clear it. The way the bill reads, and this is revision six, which we saw yesterday, if the bill, if you don't get passed by that three days by the FBI check, you have to wait 60 days before you can purchase it. Now here's the, now here's the claimer of it, claimer, claim, whatever. The FFL can only use that background check for 30 days. So, after that 30 days, you have to start all over again. Another part of that, again, is a 48-hour waiting period.
And I appreciate your synopsis, because I was not aware of this, but I agree with Toby in the nature of what we are as a select board and municipality, I'm not a constitutional lawyer either.
Right.
And I certainly appreciate and sympathize with your, your passion. But my last question, I have one more question. Would anyone standing in Vermont, you mentioned Article 16, it's pretty clear.
Yes.
Has anyone challenged the 2018 law yet?
Actually, we're in court right now.
Okay.
We're waiting for a Supreme Court date on the hall of the one that passed last year.
Okay.
The Federation is taking care of the magazine ban, and we're doing all the rest of it, which is gun owners of Vermont.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to put in my opinion, not that it matters in this context, but I can understand there's a lot of frustration with various laws and stuff. But I don't agree that all federal and state laws and regulations attempting to restrict guns should be declared null and void. That's just my opinion, so there are, should be some laws, which we can go into.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, there's, I have no problems with locking up criminals. As we all know, there's certain criminals running around this state right now that are multiple offenders who get a bracelet, and they grab a scissors, they cut that bracelet off and disappear. Third or fourth or fifth time, there's something wrong with that. No, people like that shouldn't have, the problem is, they do.
Right, no, I understand that, but that, but legally, they can, so that's a law that they, that they're not, felons aren't allowed to have.
Federal land state law, okay.
Right, so that would be something you would not be declared null and void. So, what I'm saying is, there are some laws...
But there are other bad federal laws, show you how bad it gets. A pot smoker cannot own a bullet, even with a medical card, it's against federal law.
Well, we're getting, we're getting a little, a little lost track here.
Yeah.
There we go. I just want to ask you, because you, you described one of the bills that's in, one of... I just want to ask you, because you, you described one of the bills that's in one of the, the houses, and that was to take in, it would prevent people with automatic guns to go into a church, a, what did you say?
Semi-automatic.
Oh, semi-automatic.
Okay, they've been around since eight, commercially, since 1896.
But they, I mean, they specify the buildings that they can't own.
Yes, you can't go to a church, which is private property.
Yeah.
Which is up to the pastor whether he allows it or not.
Well, I don't know why anybody would need a gun in a church.
The Texas church, here's one good example.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, security is the best.
I love to talk like this.
At this rate, you, you can bring this up at town meeting, because you are both taxpayers, we probably will talk about this some more as a board.
Residents, not taxpayers, because a resident can vote too.
Yeah.
You don't have to be a taxpayer.
You don't have to be a taxpayer.
You get to live here and go.
Well, put it this way. I always pay my taxes, sometimes a couple of days later, I always pay my taxes.
So without, so without delving into this anymore, I mean, you certainly can bring this up at town meeting anyway. That is your right, and as I said, we as a board probably will discuss it some more when we have more time to digest it. Whether we come up with a decision, or whether we support it or not, can't tell you right now, because I don't think we've read it, any of us have read it close enough to know whether we want to even support it or not. I think there's, there's a little bit of uneasiness about us as a board supporting it.
Oh, sure, I understand, I understand.
But thank you for coming in and explaining yourselves and discussing it.
If anybody wants to talk about it, or have any questions, we're more than happy to talk to you. My number's 463-9026.
What's your name?
463-9026.
Your name?
Eddie Cutler.
Thank you.
Yeah, I live right next to Steve Moore, so you know where he lives. My house was the one that was underwater.
I can say, you were pretty good about that, too, I remember.
Yeah, I know.
Because you only wanted your house fixed, not the garage, and I was like, why would you want the garage too?
We'll put it, I knocked down the workshop, that killed me, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next up is letter from W N U E S D, Jack Brier.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question, Mr. Chairman? I thought that it was the hearing, and I think Cynthia's here for that, do you really hang around?
Well, we're gonna go.
Because I really, I really think that if, unless.
There's another whole section of public budget discussion on unfinished business. So I was just trying to.
Go down the list.
Get through some of the. Is, somebody read?
So this letter was, was given to you, just as a communication and public comment, so, in a nutshell, it just, Jack Brier sent you a letter from the North, Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District, stating complicated issues they have and how they're proceeding.
Does anybody know what happened on that meeting at the 15th, and?
The Supreme Court, they?
Yeah.
They, I don't think they made a.
No decision has been rendered yet.
Do you want me to read this letter, or is there any reason to, or?
I just inserted it in your packet, because it was.
Okay.
It was a letter, it was emailed to you, relatively?
Yes.
So you've all got the letter in front of you, so, all right, any other communications and public comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll go on to unfinished business, discussion and action, so first thing up is public budget, public budget discussion. So we can talk about it some more.
Which one you want? Gravel pit, by all means.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'll get it.
No, no, it's okay.
Want me to talk?
Go for it.
Go for it.
Jump in.
So I have a couple of questions, the first one really relates to the articles, so I'm just going to jump to that. I'm wondering why Article VII includes Article VIII and IX.
It was a blunder on the part of myself, I had deleted it on all of the preliminary drafts, and it, that one, those two items are automatically attached to the bottom line. And when I gave it to Kelly for print, I did not delete them for the last time. That's going to be amended before we talk about it at town meeting, I apologize for that.
Might I suggest that next year, I don't even, why do we have separate articles for those, those have been in there for 150 million years?
I've mentioned that before, and they.
Okay. Because it always seems to be a confusion of those.
It is.
It's, so when I saw it again, I thought, oh, good news.
Just keeps throwing them in there. When we first started it, people want to see you designated something, I guess, and it, and I'm with you.
I know, but we have other line items we do with that are not separate.
No, I'm with you, I, I don't think it really worked out like we thought it was, you know, because every year, they, all they do is just bring it up and watch the balance, yeah.
I mean, I can see that for the.
It's something new, I mean.
130,000, because that, we spend that every year, pretty much, but the bridge fund, I mean, that's.
If they were to go up or change, I definitely think they should be a warning, but I, I've always agreed.
Yeah, you've got to stop taking, taking that out of that number, because, I mean, the reason I even noticed it was because I started looking at, so one of my concerns, and I know you guys know that I've had this concern for the last few years, is this significant fund balance that we have. And I know that last year at town meeting, there was a fund balance policy that was adopted, that talks about the rules of how the us as a town want to see you handle the fund balance. And in looking at the numbers, it looks like to me, so I was trying to figure out really what the bottom line is, like what is 20% of our budget? Does that include the 130, does it not include, is it just general expenses? Either way, you come out to about a number that I figured. So 20% of, I did of both budgets, but of the budget you're proposing, is around $417,000, is what we should have in reserve. Per our policy that was adopted at town meeting. Maximum. Maximum, maximum, up to. So splitting that between the two, the 5% for general expenses, and the 15% for this emergency fund, or whatever we're going to call it, our unassigned fund balance right now is $550,000. So there's another $100,000 floating around, that I see nothing in the budget, talking about that? Are we reducing taxes? The only thing I see is a little footnote in the audit, saying we're using that to finish this building. Yeah, and I want to know what gave you guys the approval to use that fund balance to finish this building? So then that got me digging into the Town Hall Fund, which is a fund that's been building up over years, and started, it looks like, back in 1998, and there's been expenditure since, and in 2016, there was $100,000 that was moved. We then voted on it in 17, because you guys moved it. Before town meeting, we decided that it should probably be an article, and we voted it down. And that money was never moved back. So we voted it down, and the money's still sitting in that fund. So I'm curious where the approval ever came from to do all of this hundreds of thousands of dollars work on this building? And now this year, we're not even being asked if the extra amount above the 20% that we said you guys could have in fund balance, and that we thought was a smart plan for future expenses, emergencies, whatever unforeseen things that we could have, it feels like that policy was put in place, and then it wasn't discussed again during the budget session, so I'm wondering if I missed something? And I just feel like there's kind of a blank check to do some work on this building.
Well, I, I just want to say a little bit about the building.
Okay.
I mean, I've been on this Select Board on and off for many, many years, and the, and from the way, way, way back, there's been talk about doing something with the building.
Yep.
And at some point now, many years ago, it was actually brought up at town meeting, and it was voted to do it, to do the work that needed to be done on the building, that was going to be on the building. And so for a few, I, I may be, I may be a little loose on this, so, but I'm just giving you my sense of. And then, you know, for a while, I mean, we had, you know, we had people coming down, you know, looking at the building, deciding on how, what, you know, how we best should be able to do it. Drew up plans, so on and so forth, and I believe that it was approved that we should go ahead with the building, using the money, of course, that we did have at that time.
I, I, I'm 100% with you.
Okay.
But there's, there wasn't enough for what we're doing.
Yeah, I know.
So my question is, when did anybody ever think to come back to the voters and say, look, we don't have enough to finish this? We've talked about in the past of using surplus, we asked you in 2017, and you said no. I mean, and now we're in the midst of the project, we have a contract with a contractor.
Yes.
I mean, what the hell are we going to do now? You can't just leave it the way it is.
Right.
But there is this lack of asking for permission, and when you do or don't get it, the follow-through is not there. We did not give you guys permission to keep that $100,000 in that Town Hall Fund two years ago, and it's still sitting there, and it's being used. And now we're out of money. So that was part of our surplus then. So now, there's nothing in this town report, in the warning, nothing saying to us, we're going to spend, we have this much left to do, it's going to cost us $60,000 to get it finished, and we're going to use surplus money, is that okay? There's no budget showing us what this project costs, there's no, it's buried in page 57 in the auditor's report, that the board expects to use, or wants to use, the surplus to put a roof on the Northwestminster Community Center and finish this building. We voted last year to tell you guys, you could use 417,000 of the surplus to keep aside for emergencies, but we didn't tell you it was okay to spend the rest of it. And I don't know that that, part of that 20%, maybe that's going to, this is going to be considered an emergency, so you'll have to dip into that 15% of your 20, I, I don't know.
That 400,000 is not in our, that emergency fund, the way I understand it. Because once it goes in there, it has to be voted on if we're going to take it out.
Well.
Yes.
So why isn't it in there, the policy says that's what you need to do with it? I'll read the policy.
I think it says a maximum, so that would be.
Right, but then you can only keep 5% of your fund balance in unreserved.
Right.
For overruns in your highway, or whatever, overruns, I don't mean to pick on highway, but.
Well, between.
Right.
You know, when we have to spend money and then getting money in taxes, but essentially it covers.
So that, that is around, that's around 100, 105,000.
Right.
So there's 550,000 right now, so 105,000 you can keep to spend for that type of thing. Where is the other amount? It's in your emergency fund, maybe not on paper, but that's what your policy says you're going to do. Now there's another 100,000 beyond that, so where is that going?
Well, I mean, that's why I have a problem with talking about, or, yeah. If it goes in the emergency fund, if we say it's in the emergency fund, and is this correct, Russ? Then we can't use it unless we, until we vote on it.
That's correct, that's.
But we don't have, the 400,000 is not, there is no money in it.
What do you mean, have it started the policy yet?
We have not declared any money.
But just because we have a policy doesn't mean there's money in it.
We never have declared.
Okay, well, right now, there's 550,000 of unreserved, and if you're not going to set it aside because you don't want to ask to, you don't want to have to vote on it, then you should give the 400,000 back to us. You don't have the right to spend surplus on whatever you want.
At town meeting last year, was my interpretation of what happened, was that the Select Board did ask, asked permission to, it's not in the minutes, I looked this today, because it was supposed to be, that. That the, the surplus that we were carrying over would take care of the rest of this renovation and get this off of our plate, without taking out a loan.
But it wasn't an article?
It was not, it was done on the floor as, as part of the budget discussion.
Where, what, where's record of that, I guess, is what I would say.
I'm sorry, I don't do the minutes.
I didn't come to town meeting last year, because I, I felt that I am perceived as somebody who asks too many questions, and, and that really got the best of me last year. And that's frustrating to hear that something transpired, and it's not within the minutes, and, and it is impacting a, a pretty big conversation that, that needs to be had.
You didn't have another question, I guess?
It's frustrating, it's, you know, for, for someone like myself that wants to be involved, it's frustrating when things like this happen, to be honest with you. It, it takes the interest out of it, because every time we turn around, it feels like I, I get myself involved, I want to be a part of it, I want to give feedback, and I leave scratching my head after every conversation, after being involved in it. And to not have something documented in minutes, and have you speak, that it occurred, that's frustrating.
So, but it doesn't matter, if it's not in the minutes, then it's not, it's not a legal record, so it's, whether we think that conversation happened, it happened, it didn't get in the minutes, it wasn't voted on, tough luck at this point, we can't, so now we're, now we're in the position where we have $550,000 of surplus, which to me is an extreme amount of money, that, but I also, and I, and I talked to a lot of people when this fund balance policy went in last year, I consult and tell Select Boards that they should have a fund balance policy, so that they're, when they're in their budget season, they're directed by the people what they want their fund balance, what they want to have happen with it, so that they're not confused, you know, they have some direction. But you had 550,000, you have a policy that says it can exceed 20%, you're past the 20%, and there's only a footnote saying that we're going to use the surplus to finish this building and put a roof on the community center. And nowhere, I know there's been discussion from 1998, I've got a timeline that Russ had produced at some point, from 1998, this has been a discussion. But there was not as much money in there as was perceived in this timeline that I saw. Because there were two years that $100,000 was in this timeline, there's no vote for that, anywhere, one, there was a vote, and it was voted down. So it's just.
What was the, excuse me for interrupting, what was it, what was in our total, then we have, when we started, which would have been back when we did the, we had 300 and.
330,000, 300 and someone in it.
I couldn't tell you that number.
Really?
That's, that's.
I can, I can tell you, I went back to 2014 in the audits, but I also got a printout from Ally, in 2004, there was 328,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, 330, I was remembering, that was earmarked for the, this building's renovation.
Right, so then, when did we start the actual renovation? There were two surpluses that were moved to that fund to start that, it was 97, and 98, and 98, and 99, something like that. So there wasn't much done, when did the renovation, like this major renovation start, a year ago?
It started with, with paint and insulation.
So even if that was 2010?
It would have been 14 and 15.
There was $158,000 in there, at that point, according to your audit. So. So then the following year, there was a hundred and.
So they spent two hundred something thousand on renovations between two thousand and, what did you say, and thirteen?
Uh, two thousand and four. It went from three twenty-eight down to two ninety-five, to two forty-seven, to two thirty-two, to two twenty-eight. It just kept going down. I don't know, I'd have to look at the detail of what the expenses were, but the audits are extremely clear as to what your fund balance is. And you guys signed for those audits every year, agreeing to all these numbers. So if you didn't agree with that number, nobody should've signed it.
What happened to it?
But what's more concerning to me than even all of this is that hundred thousand dollars that we specifically voted no. We were in the no mood that year. No, we said no to everything. And that hundred thousand dollars stayed there.
I know, I, is this, um, I'm, I'm embarrassed that we don't know that. You know, that has, that this is not something that we are looking, and I appreciate Cynthia because you do know what you're talking about. And it is important, and.
So let me just say where I'm at right now. Because we're at a point, like I said, we're, I mean, what are you gonna do? You have this building torn apart. We can't, the people that work here deserve to have a place that's healthy and nice to work in. I'm not opposed to that. We're at a point. What?
Cut the budget somewhere. Cut it on.
We're at a point where, and I'm sure we have a contract with a contractor. If we break that contract, there's probably a problem, I don't know. So we're at that point where we have to finish it. Do I think we have to put a roof on the Northwestminster Community Center? That's a whole different discussion. I think that's just been a money pit, if you ask me, but.
The roof's done, ain't it?
Yes, it is.
Oh, well, so, right, there you go. So there goes more of the surplus already. So we've already spent fifty-something thousand this year, in this current fiscal year that we're in. So we're pretty much in that fund down to zero. So it's obvious to me that we're gonna have to use some of this surplus. I mean, what are you gonna do at this point? Or you're gonna have to ask us to borrow money. There's, there's no, there's no choice.
How much more's gonna go into the building?
But my point is, maybe we should use some of your up to twenty percent, this, whatever this number is, and give us back the extra hundred, or fifty this year and fifty next year to keep the tax rate stabilized, and stop spending fund balance unless you ask. That's where I'm at.
May I?
Mm-hmm.
And thank you for everything you do. Thank you for everything you do. We have a great banker, and you do a great job, as Toby was just saying. The public, and I, I saw you in the back, and I wanna make sure I acknowledge that as well. Public records law is what it is. And I've been here for a brief time. But there's a conflict between the public records law, what's VCLT advises towns on books and records, and what the Secretary of State advises. And these are all lawyers, of which I don't believe any of us are. However, what I sympathize with you on is, I can't get the predicate history as to where our policy is going if I don't have a firm record of what was stated in sixteen, fourteen, twelve, ten. Because the current rule that we established for the municipality doesn't make it. So that rule is there. So we're speculating, all of us, by going back and saying, when was this was said, how much was it, how was it supposed to be spent? And when we put in a firm policy, and you're a banker, okay? That kinda keeps you locked into, into a certain lane, which is fine, okay? I mean, 'cause it keeps us in the lane and prevents us from having the type of policy discussion we're having now. So I think you're right. And as Toby said, it's embarrassing. But at the end of the day, I would just say, 'cause I trust your numbers, and I, I know who, I know how smart you are, okay? At the end of the day, if you don't have the policy guideline that says, this is the guideline we need to work within, we could say twenty percent maximum, five percent funds policy, unless it's in writing, our auditor's gonna continue to come back to us and say.
Well, your policy is in writing.
Right.
Okay.
But you have to have the predicate, you have to have the stuff locked in the record. The rule that says this should be kept in the record so that we know exactly what was said, when it was said, who approved it, and who didn't approve it.
I guess I'm confused. Are you talking about the fund balance policy?
I'm talking about how we got, I, I, I'm talking about how we got to a position where no one knows where we started and no one knows where we got to.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
Well, I kinda do, 'cause I read through every minute.
I understand, but you had, I'm pretty sure when we were talking there originally, you had stated that this record, or I know you in the back were saying, or in the back were saying, well, there's no record of it.
Of that particular conversation.
Right.
From one town meeting last year.
Right.
That one set of numbers. I don't remember what it was you were talking, Russ said that he said at town meeting last year, he's said that there was permission given to use fund balance, and that was not in the minutes. It was that one statement I was talking about.
Right. And what I'm trying to point out is, when you have a policy as a town that we adopt, that's, that coincides with both the Public Records Act and what the Secretary of State believes should be the proper good practices, best business practices for towns for keeping that type of record, we're never gonna have this conversation. Because it's going to have been said, and I'm gonna be able to refer back to that and say, wait a minute, we can't do that. 'Cause this is what the taxpayers voted for, or this is what they didn't vote for. So we can't move beyond that. I'm not in any way trying to change the conversation from where we are right now.
I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm totally not following you. Huh? I'm not.
Okay.
Yeah, and maybe it's just, I'm just missing something in the conversation. I, maybe, maybe it's.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I think that from my perspective, because this group that is here, with the exception of you, um, this is the group that has been around for a while, to be honest with you. So when we're talking about things like the hundred thousand dollars that was voted down and that money wasn't moved, there are people here that were a part of those conversations. And I guess naively, I truly believe that those things are gonna be followed up and they're going to happen. If there is a conversation that happened on the floor of town meeting, I think that if I was intimately a part of this town, I would read the minutes and say, wait a second, remember this, it's missing, where is it?
That's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm more, I guess that's just who I am. And, and I expect that after this year's town meeting, based on this blunder that has come up, that the voters voted on the floor to use this money, but yet it's not in any written document, so that's why the money was used. I, I would hope to think that anyone on the select board, anyone in administration is going to read those minutes from this next meeting to make sure everything was encompassed. I think we have film we could go back to if we needed to. That's why Fact TV comes, is to help make sure that things are documented if there's human error with minutes.
Yeah.
We have things in place. I just, I think it needs to be important. Because it's important to us as taxpayers, it needs to be important to the board, and it needs to be important to the administration.
I totally agree, and that's where I was going with that exactly. I don't wanna impugn anybody.
No.
Because I, especially if I wasn't there.
Right.
But when we have a policy in place for those of us when we're not there, like you said you weren't there, or I might've been in another meeting, and that was said, if the policy was placed to make sure that, 'cause I'm sure, I don't believe Fact TV was there last year, were they?
I'm not sure. I wasn't there, to be honest.
They were not, right?
I don't know.
So, okay, so there's another example of something where I'm saying, how do I know what the record is?
Yeah.
If I, if I, if I wasn't, if I wasn't there. Therefore, I don't wanna ever say to you, I just don't wanna ever say to you, oh, well, we voted on it, or we didn't vote on it.
Oh, yeah.
And I gave you the wrong answer.
Yeah, and I would want you to say that.
That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
I think, I think the takeaway is, there are things that happen at town meeting.
Right.
Those need to be followed up on. Obviously, the voting down of the article to use that hundred thousand, the money was not moved back as it should be. I think this group is probably thinking, okay, whatever happens this year, we're gonna make sure we follow up on it. It's of most importance so that two years later, we're not in this situation. I think.
First thing that happens is the recording clerk has to.
I mean.
It's not me.
Yeah, regardless, I'm, I'm saying, there's, I'm saying, there's, there's multiple things that are happening, but the errors that happen create a lack of confidence, quite honestly. And the last thing that we want is to go to town meeting with a lack of confidence.
You know what I think, actually, I'm trying to get this back in my head, and, you know, I think maybe because it was, it was a casual, not an actual vote, but a, I think.
Oh, last year, you mean?
Yeah, I think basically, we talked about the fact that we were doing the town hall and we would be using some money. But it was, and, and we assumed that everybody's okay with that, and nobody said, no, that it's not okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's the danger of not going to town meeting.
That's right.
And I wasn't there, so I can't say anything different.
No, but it was also, you know, it should've been, you know, Ashley said, you know, we're gonna do this, is this okay? Let's have a vote on it.
I think that's why I'm saying.
We didn't do that.
I think that's why I'm saying, we're at a point, prior to town meeting now, where we do have a policy that was adopted, that was in the record of this is our policy. We know what our fund balance is. We know how much you can keep in there, up to a certain amount, based on this policy. I wanna know what we're doing with the additional hundred thousand. Personally, I would like it to go back. I think it's time we start getting some money back. We have a huge fund balance that has grown, that has made it available to us to have these contingency, emergency funds available now, which is a good thing, it's not a bad thing. But I do not want to see the ability to just spend money without a planned, like, I wanna know, if, if we're gonna use surplus money this year, why is it not in the budget, what the additional amount is to get this fixed, with an offset of the surplus being used? So that it's very clear, when I sit at town meeting, that I know what's gonna be spent this year.
Actually, we, you can get that. Because we have that, you gave us that number where we were at the last, basically at the last phase of what we're doing now, which was Ally's office, the Lister's office, and so forth, is the last phase that we have to do. And we had ninety thousand dollars, thereabouts, left over, or left.
A little bit more than that, but yeah.
In the, in the fund that we had for renovation of this town hall.
Well, at June thirty, you had sixty-two thousand dollars left in that one.
Well, I think, we, we need to go back and look, because we had extra money come in from the, from the funds of the, what do you call it? We ended up getting extra, all the elevator and all that.
That was all paid for by.
By, so the expense went out, we also had the income coming. You understand, 'cause we got.
So that's a question. Did the grant money make it back into that fund?
All those are good, like I said, all those are good questions. I, I know I'm frustrated too because we sat here at town meeting every time we leave, and we had a year, remember, where we were three hundred and some odd thousand dollars short, I'm taxing people 'cause we made a mistake. And yeah, as a select board, I've been frustrated for years that I don't, even after we see these monies, I don't physically sometimes see that they balanced out, that we gave the three thousand over here and that we gave the thousand over there. And whenever I ask, it's like a moving target. You know, you'd ask them, oh, we just got taxes in, so we don't know what it is. It's been kinda frustrating to know, but we do owe the voters to come back to them and say, listen, it balances out. You gave us permission to take the hundred and ten, it's now over here. You're right, since I've been here, I've never seen that clean cut of paperwork. It balanced out last year's.
Yeah, I mean.
And you, you've been involved.
I have to say, I know what happens in an audit. You guys get this little piece of information?
Right.
And I'm not saying all of you, but you kinda flip through it. And then maybe the auditor comes, and you're like, oh, yep.
We're going by what they're telling you.
You're going by what they're, but legally, you're signing that every number on here is right. And from what you guys just said, there's money that's come in from grants that if I look through the last however many years, I went back to two thousand and fourteen in the audits, really, the only money I saw coming into that fund was interest earnings. I didn't see any grant money. So did the grant money get applied towards the general fund and not the town hall fund?
Like I said, now you're to how the.
Yeah.
I knew that we had of that six hundred thousand for the meat house, we had money that was available to use on the front of the building.
Let's clarify the grant monies. The grant that we got for the lift.
Yeah.
Came from the community consolidated grant from the government, grants.gov.
Mm-hmm.
And that was from Mandich, the, the payback.
Okay.
We can, we can use it for two different things. ADA compatible projects in a public building, or back to the public for, for loans. The remainder went to law, uh, legal fees to fight for the remainder of the six hundred thousand dollars that I still owed. But so we took that out of that fund. So it wouldn't have gone into the capital improvement fund and then back to the, to the cost. We took it directly from where the source was. And that was from NIMRIC, that's.
But if it was never recognized as revenue against the expenses within that fund, it, it would be part of your fund balance. So what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is, I believe, I mean, I, I get, there's money that has come in. I think it's a paperwork problem with not understanding fund accounting and making sure that you book a revenue against an expense that's in the fund that it's being tracked in. So without going back to nineteen ninety-eight, which I was here then, 'cause my daughter was born in ninety-eight, without going back to that, we're at a point where it has to be done. I mean, we can argue all day long that things weren't put in the right bucket or whatever we wanna do. The bottom line is, was we have over a half a million dollars in fund balance. I wanna know from the board how much of that you're keeping by following our reserve policy that we put in place last year, where that money is being allocated and what fund it's being allocated to, and what is the additional money above that twenty percent being earmarked for? And at this point right now, it's a little late for you guys to be asking at town meeting 'cause you can't have a money article on there. But we could amend the budget to include some offset of that surplus to reduce property taxes. That's my question, and that's a big question to ask in the middle of a town meeting.
Well, you know, we, we really cannot leave the, the building the way it is right now.
Toby, I just said that. I mean, I just said.
No, but you're saying.
No, I, I mean, we're.
You spend the money, use the money, but tell us what those numbers are.
Yeah, but you, you were just saying that to put it, give it back as tax money.
Well, you could use part of your fifteen percent of your emergency.
Which is what we did two years ago.
Well, I would like, yeah.
No, I'm done.
Two years ago, that's when somebody came and said, I think you should give a hundred thousand. So we did it right then and there, right? We lowered the taxes by the hundred thousand.
That's when we started talking about the fact that we had so much money, give it back.
Yeah.
Right, but I don't wanna be, I'm kind of in the same boat as Katie. I have not come for the last two years because after two years ago, I was labeled a troublemaker. And I, it just really rubbed me the wrong way.
It's terrible to feel that way, as professionals, honestly.
So I stayed away for a little bit, and I got a little bit involved last year because of the fund balance policy, and I understood it and I had some questions. But I started looking at things again and I'm like, you know, and I don't wanna be all the time. And I want to, um, I want you guys to know, when you have this enormous fund balance, and now you have some direction on what you can do with that fund balance, 'cause you have a policy, I wanna just know that you'll have an answer at town meeting of how we can kind of maneuver this to get the building done, maybe give some money back, may, we'll still have reserves. I think there's a way to do it that is not like leaving everybody high and dry.
Do you have specific recommendations?
Well.
I mean, you're very, you've been.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to use, my recommendation would be to give the hundred thousand dollars back to the town over two years, because you don't wanna drop the tax rate and then, you know, just stabilize it a little bit. And then whatever else you need to do with this building, take it out of that up to twenty percent that you have sitting aside. It's still gonna be three hundred thousand dollars you have sitting there. It's not like we're draining it.
So will we make the motion?
We have about a two, we have a two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar contract. And out of that, we had about ninety. So. out of that, we had about ninety, so about two, two-hundred thousand.
So, but ninety left.
So we haven't brought that to the board, as we have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus, five-hundred-and-fifty, somewhere in that range, two-hundred would be used for the building, we'd have three-hundred thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which would cover the contingency fund, or we would give it back, and not this year's, but next year's.
What do you mean, you haven't had that conversation? Didn't, you didn't have that conversation during budget season?
We did, and we didn't know where we were going to be exactly, with the contingency of this building. Everything they touched, they have to, you know, do a little bit more, so we were playing that, making sure we had enough, before we gave back, and then were shy.
But the building, the building fund was separate from our budget.
We're talking, we're talking, not the, the capital reserve, that's gonna be depleted.
It's already, there's only like twelve thousand left.
Right, it's very, very small.
Yeah.
And then the surplus was going to cover the remaining of the building, as per conversation, and then the remainder, you'd have to look at, when you had the final round June, and that's when you would make the decision to bring it to the taxpayers, and tell them, the following year, you'd have the surplus of anything that you wanted to give back to them. That was the conversation we had months ago, after we realized that, that we did have the surplus.
The only thing, the only thing that even, unless you're a nerd like me, the only place in this town report, that even addresses anything that I'm talking about, is on page fifty-seven, it was part of the audit. "With the surplus from this past year, the select board are trying to complete the town hall renovations and place a new roof on Northwestminster Community House, without asking for additional tax money." That is the only place in this whole book, that talks about what is going on in this building, and it's talking about using that surplus, and there is no mention of voters even voting on it. Even when you look back at this record, from 1998, that any other board, and any other administration, has always come to the voters to ask about saving money for this building. Up until two thousand, two thousand fourteen and fifteen, was the first year that there was an attempt to put a hundred thousand dollars in, from the fifteen surplus, that if, nobody ever asked us. Sixteen, they didn't ask, until seventeen, and we said no, but it's still there. So I'm not even talking about, at this point, putting the hundred thousand dollars back. You can't, you only have twelve thousand dollars left. So, I mean, that's, we're gonna have, that's gonna have to be water under the bridge. But now it's just, what are we gonna do to move forward? And I just want it to not be a conversation all the time, that this surplus just gets used for whatever. It's our money. It is not, it is not the administration's money, to just, we might have said, "No, we don't want the town hall renovated, but do all the ADA stuff. Do the stuff you have to do." I don't ever reme-, I mean, I know you said that, years ago, there was conversations, and there was a, there was a-
There was a vote.
There was a vote.
There was a vote in two thousand and eight, that said, "Voted to extend the balance of nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight surplus for renovations and improvements of municipal offices." The nineteen ninety-seven and ninety-eight surplus was a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That's what that vote, I read the minutes, that's what the vote says, and that's what this timeline that Russ gave, at some point, says. So this vote from two thousand and eight, was not to spend two-hundred-and-something-thousand dollars.
The, the Northwestminster Town Hall. You know, I think the, the thinking that has been going on here, at least for me, it's really important, is that we have to maintain our buildings. I mean, if you can let that building fall apart, and say, you know, blah, 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 we don't want it, but even if we ever wanted to sell it, you can't sell a piece of junk.
Well, we were told that we could not sell it.
Well, whatever.
Basically. And that was, and the roof ended up being an emergency, in the situation that it was leaking.
I shut my mouth about that. I said I didn't like it, but I did shut my mind about that.
Well, I didn't either, but-
We consider like, the postal maintenance.
I mean, to me, I'm not sure, I, and I haven't followed it close enough to know, in any of these buildings, that we've pursued any historical grants or anything, I don't even have any idea. I mean, Northwestminster clearly falls in that, in that realm, and I've never heard discussion about that at all, and I haven't been involved enough to really criticize it, or ask questions about it. I don't like it, I think it's a waste of money, but what, it's, I, I, like, we may disagree about that, and I understand what you're saying, but that just is what it is, and, but I think you guys are, I'm still not, we need to proceed, we can talk about this all night long.
There's a difference between a maintenance, which is fixing the roof up here, and then just doing approval. This, this, this approval was not maintenance, this was capital investment, yeah.
Yeah, clearly. I mean, and some of it, and I, like I said, I think every employee of the town deserves to have good equipment, and needs to have a nice, clean, safe place to work. I, there's, I have no problem with that. Do I feel like anything in excess of some of those things, should have had more approval? But we're pa-, we're, we're way past that at this point, but we still have over a half a million dollars sitting here. So, I just wanna know, how do we-
We, we, as a board, we need to discuss that, obviously, and we've done in the past, is just come to the voters, and right up front, make the amendment that we're gonna lower it by fifty thousand dollars. You bring up a lot of good points, but we could, so there's no need to discuss it, you would just actually amend those.
I'd love to see, it would make me so happy to see that come from you guys.
That's what I'm saying, I'm, you've not brought anything I disagree with, to be honest with you. I don't know why we end up every year-
Because it would still good, finally, to have, you know, a, a prepared kind of, okay, we've had this discussion before, this is where we're at. What I'm hearing from Russ, is he's not quite sure how much it might, because he was talking about waiting till June 30th, 'cause we're not sure.
You know, you have a lot of skills, that, that others don't have, and I appreciate it. And I think that, you know, maybe we should, you know, without having to pay you or anything, but to have it, have it, you as an advisor, when we're dealing with these issues, it would be helpful, I think, seriously.
I've offered, I've offered several times, to do that, prior to, and I, I mean, you can only push yourself into a building so many times, before you decide that you might as well go home and watch-
We're talking about it now.
-housewives or something.
You do bring up a really good point, I don't remember all of what you're saying, and I go there, but, you know, it's too often that we leave that meeting, and then, all of a sudden, three months down the road, and you don't really ever see the number where it ended up, because of all kinds of different reasons, but yeah, somewhere along, like, you like to have a clean slate, that this is what the voters voted on, on each one of those articles, and this is where the money is, and this is how we paid it out. It never seems like it's ever that simple.
No, and I would really, really encourage you to really start getting intimately familiar with your financial statements, because it's very, very clear, in the audit, that, going back to, I went back quite a few years, when I was in here the other day, how much was in that fund? I mean, it's, it's, there's, there's barely any activity, because it's one line item that says expense, and one line item that says income. From what Russ just said, I believe, just in my thinking, that there's probably some revenue, that was never really allocated to that fund, that probably should have been.
I know it was.
That's why I'm saying, I-
What, what, when you say that fund, what do you mean by that?
The, the-
Capital improvement.
The capital, is it called capital?
He just took the money and paid that bill, because that's where the money was earmarked, but it didn't go through-
The revenue, like, from this grant, or whatever, might not-
Right, no, I, 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 'cause I'm-
That's why I don't wanna have you guys spend hours digging through, we're, we're where we are.
Right.
We have audited numbers, these are the numbers.
Right.
Am I, am I a little upset, that the hundred thousand dollars that we specifically voted on, and said no to, remained there?
Well, which more of-
I don't think there was anything, I don't think it was even shady, it's, it's, you have to understand fund accounting.
And I can say, we're all here, I don't, from what we, from what we were led to believe, that it, I don't remember it being denied that way, that's what I understand. Like I said, it's a shame that we don't have a clear understanding-
Oh, no, that one you do.
Right.
That one you do, Craig, it was, it was an actual vote, there was an article for it.
But no, I guess my point, where he kept saying, we, we had permission from the voters to move the money. We kept thinking, okay, I guess, I guess they gave us that permission, I don't think we ever, that's, that's the way we felt, anyways.
Can I just tell you, Craig can read the minutes down?
Yeah.
I mean, I did, I read the minutes, the minutes from two thousand and seventeen, I remember it clear as day. I remember the money being moved, before the end of the year, by select board approval in two thousand and sixteen. I came in, you guys ended up putting it as an article on FY seventeen, basically asking for permission, something you did in the previous year, and we voted it down.
Which was a huge discussion. I mean, I think the body-
And it's, that's clearly written in the minute.
It was a big discussion, because the money was moved before, right?
No, I'm not interested.
Yeah.
The, the, the whole time, the premise, where you said, "Where do we come up with the money?", it was because we were, "Oh, you can take this year, and this year, and this, okay, that's reasonable," you know?
The only time I see that, is back in ninety-seven and ninety-eight, when there was a specific vote to take surplus to create these funds. Otherwise, there was no other votes to move money, from the general fund, to set aside for this purpose.
Well, I, I personally will thank you for giving our, you know, giving us that, the kind of, your, your expertise, and this, obviously, we don't-
Quality control, basically. It should be your quality, yeah.
I just want to reduce our taxes a little bit, it's, yeah. Which is why I think the voters support that.
And we, we need, we need to go back and track this.
But we're not, you know, obviously, none of us are happy.
And, and I, I appreciate both of us, both of you having that discussion before town meeting, that we can be a little prepared.
Yes. Honestly, it was a little part of me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, they want to-
There was it with me too, but I think it's-
But almost said, I'm just gonna go, and I, and I just, that's just not in my nature, because I've sat on that side of the table. I know what it feels like, when somebody asks me a question, that I don't know the answer to right off, and I, and a town meeting is the last place that you wanna say, "I'll have to get back to you," because when did the, what's that, next year?
No, the worst part, you, you talk like you have common sense, that makes sense.
That's the worst part?
Exactly, but, I was like, okay, I don't have an answer for that, but that's common sense, you know?
Well, because, it makes sense.
Yeah.
The only other thing, if there's information that I have said, that is not correct, then correct me. I don't have to be right, I really don't. I, I, I just want it right. What I do know, is we have five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and I wanna know what we're doing with that money. That's what I wanna know. That's the bottom line.
And that gives us a chance of the select board to be prepared, before we go in there, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, and you might wanna work up an amendment, you're gonna have to have an amendment anyways, because of those-
But, like I said, if we're proactive, and we actually come in, and, and we do that in the past, and the minute you do it, you actually make amendment, before the voters even know what you're even talking about, and you amend it to two million and sixty, instead of two million and eighty, or whatever, it kind of kills the conversation, but we're having a little better, whatever.
I do have an issue of, the two of you, though, stating that you didn't go to town meeting, because you felt you were troublemakers.
I have been told I've been-
And, and that is, that is-
Yes.
That's not coming from you.
And that's not coming from you.
That is troubling, but that is troubling to me, as a, you know, as a taxpayer-
Yeah.
And knowing that, you know, you work for NIMRIC, you work for the bank, you're very knowledgeable, much more knowledgeable than I am, on financial matters of this, you know, of what we're talking about here. And that you would feel, that you don't wanna go, or that you don't wanna question something, because you're, you, you feel that you're causing trouble, is, that's more disturbing to me than anything, because personally, I wanna be questioned. If, if I've done something that, or we've done something as a board, or we've been led some, to believe something, and we didn't catch it, then shame on us, but if-
Sometimes it's just a question.
If you don't re-
I don't know, we're just-
Yeah, but it, but if you don't bring it up, I mean, that's not good either, so-
Plus, we don't want people to be discouraged from civic engagement, I mean, that's town meeting, that's, you want-
Well, and that's why I do again, because I've kind of given myself a couple of years to, I mean, I've always loved this, I've done it since I was twenty-four years old, I've been here, and I, and, but, I really have been discouraged, and so I'm glad I came, and I'm hoping that we can-
Glad you came.
I'm hoping that we can-
Your experience.
I'm hoping that you can give me some money.
Hey.
Give her a piece of it.
I don't care.
We'll work out.
At the end of the day, my interest, and Cynthia's interest, is really just to better the financial position of the town, which in turn, betters the financial position for people that live here, and are residents, and are taxpayers, and really, there's no other agenda. And I feel like, that's misconstrued sometimes, as to why I've taken interest in the gravel pit, it's financial related, it's a long-term investment, that's it. And if the perception is something else, from anyone in this building, I, I, I really think you should take a step back, and, and pay attention to the questions that I'm asking, because at the end of the day, it really is just the numbers. It's the financial, it's the quality of life, and it's living in this town, and wanting to be a part of it, quite honestly.
Well, and that's true for all of us too.
I believe that.
And we, you know, it, we have our, our limits, and I think that everything that we do, we're, we are genuinely thinking that we're doing the right thing, you know?
Yeah, I've never thought-
No, I haven't either, so. I'm gonna get to a basketball game, but thank you all, and I'm gonna take a look at the gravel pit, and I'll probably reach out to someone, just to ask questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you don't feel they're answered, don't feel-
Yeah, I came here, I came here for a reason, I, I didn't want to blindside anybody at town meeting.
I appreciate that, I thank you.
You know, if I can help share information with other people, it makes sense.
Thank you.
What's that noise?
It's a train.
It's a train, it was all-
There's no train, Toby, does there? We know about trains.
I know you don't hear that on the other side.
We do, sometimes, yeah. It depends on the weather.
If it's getting ready to rain, yeah.
Okay, so do we wanna talk about this some more, or do we wanna, oh yeah, we're still on public budget discussion? Of which we've had some pretty good discussions.
Mm-hmm, that's good.
Obviously, we need to have another meeting on it, that's for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, more than one, maybe.
Excuse me.
Because I have some questions, I guess. If there aren't any more at this time, then we can move on, if you've got some more, do you wanna talk to Cynthia?
No, I'm good, I'm just gonna-
Maybe we could put it on the next agenda, agenda of the next meeting, so we can-
Oh, very definitely, we're gonna, um, talk about these funds, and this town hall renovations, and so forth. Whether that wants to be under, uh, I don't know, we could, we could just leave it under public budget discussion, and bring it up at the next meeting, 'cause I'm gonna have some, and we'll get some more stuff on the agenda, 'cause I've got some questions that I want answered now. All right, so if we don't have anything more, that we're going to discuss on that, at this point in time, town meeting discussions, um, does anybody need information needed for articles?
I've given you some, I've some, let me digest, and you can obviously come meet with you.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I have a few questions about the bridge. Basically, I can talk to you later, but since it's a public meeting, I'll bring it up. So, the bridge fund has a hundred and twenty-two thousand, the estimated cost of repairs, eight-hundred, about eight-hundred thousand, we need to pay five percent?
That's correct, 'cause we're closing the road.
But then you said, the town has already started paying for the bridge engineering and design, so, does the fifty-three thousand include the-
Yes, the, the engineering fees-
So that's all-
That we're already starting to pay for, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But we're only paying five percent of the engineering fees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is everything, right, okay.
Which all comes out of the bridge fund, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. And we've already paid for Goldie's, so, I mean, the painting of Goldie's Bridge, et cetera. So, that was before the 122,000.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Here, Russ, let me go back to Article 8 and 9. Those were never instituted by the townspeople. We just did it ourselves. We, as a select board, just said, "Let's come up with those."
I've never been to town meeting where we didn't have those too.
But I, but I, it wasn't there when I first got on, and I don't remember any discussion other than we decided to just do it.
What are we talking about?
Well, I think that, I think the articles have all been there as long as I can-
Back in the midst of time, we decided, and that's what we do every year.
The bridge, the bridge fund and, and the-
Equipment fund.
Equipment fund hasn't been, it wasn't there when I first got on, I can tell you that.
Oh, it wasn't. So, then at one point you-
I know Chris, and Chris and Paul, you know, all of us were on it. We had a discussion. There was some question about where are we going with that, why not? But it was a advantage to have in a capital, and I'll remember that.
Yes.
I thought Noah Conner started that.
He had, he had an equipment fund. The town actually paid the equipment fund for the use of the equipment, which built that reserve. So, after that, that's, this started when Matt Daskel was manager.
Really?
Yeah, because Matt stopped the equipment fund.
Right.
And we did a blanket amount to move over there. Because we, the road forming used to send the use of equipment to Joan. She would put up an invoice. The town would pay the equipment fund for the use of it.
Cynthia, I, I went back to see how, you know, what, what the increases were. I went back 10 to 15 years, and that, those two articles have been on our, our docket since-
Boy, fifty years.
At least 10 to 15 years. I can't remember exactly when.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, Matt Daskel was when I was here, so that was-
Yeah, it was quite a holdup.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've been on the board going on sixteen years.
So, that's why I-
You were here when Matt was here.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
No, I was here-
But that's, that's probably not far enough that it was even, I mean, how long ago was Matt?
Eight years ago.
So, not Matt. I'm talking about Glenn. Glenn was the one that stopped it. Sorry.
Yeah, Glenn stopped it. I got on the board when Glenn was here.
I don't think Matt started anything.
No, it was Glenn. Flashbacks of bad stuff, so.
And there was some advantage, I remember them bringing, why we wanted to do that, but anyways. I think, I think I remember going back and having a discussion that we didn't have a right to pull surface money to go buy capital equipment, but we could do it into a fund. So, we would put money into a fund and all that. I just know that when I first got on, it wasn't like this.
You're right. It wasn't.
But I've been sixteen years.
Long time.
I've been, yeah, a long time.
So, your thoughts are, is to take out 8 and 9 and just leave?
No, I just, just a quick discussion was brought up, 'cause I'm, I'm with you, like, if we're gonna be here every year, why even bring the article? Why not just put it into the general fund?
I mean, I even don't wanna run it past Larry, probably, or whoever the lawyer is now, but-
I, and obviously, this is probably not the year, but I just, we're getting to a point where, yeah, why isn't it just the bottom line?
This is not a great time to be doing-
No, it isn't.
-this conversation, because we're going to need to start talking about bumping the bridge rehabilitation fund, because we have some substantial need coming up.
Which we were warning the people about.
Yeah.
Yeah. We talked about it, and actually, we talked about it.
My whole point of bringing it up late, earlier, I don't care if there are separate article, personally, but just don't include them in that bottom line. Like he said, he just included them. I mean, it's just confusing that we're voting, we're voting on it, then we're voting on it again.
Yeah.
Unless we amend the article.
We have it before. This is other years.
But if you're gonna-
The issue is, is that Fletcher wants the, a number in the article, and the number is going to be bogusly changed as you go through, and you never know what that bottom line is, and then we never go back to it. So, no one, at the end of the day, will know exactly what we voted on.
You do, because you have, you have to add each individual article up. That's how it works. That's the-
But what it is, is like a pyramid system, where if you're a taxpayer, you're gonna go, "That's the most I wanna pay," and obviously, you add another, and that one. Now, you can't go back and subtract from the beginning. You see what I'm saying?
No, I don't. I mean, I do.
For the annual budget.
You're, you're voting each individual article separate. If the article for the total expenditure for your general fund is 2,87,411, which is the number that's on page-
Ten.
Hold on.
Ten.
Ten. Eighteen. Page eighteen, 2,87,411. Then you vote another, another article, fifteen. Then you vote another article, 130. Then you're voting in your, your special articles, your SEVCS, your whatever. When you go to set the tax rate, you add those articles up. That's what the auditor does.
No, but I guess my question is, if you've already passed the 2 million and some odd, and then people say, "Okay, now you keep adding articles and articles." Now, all of a sudden, you go, "Well, wait a minute. I wouldn't approve the 2 million if I knew we were gonna add all these articles." It's too late to take the articles. You've already approved them as articles. You can't pull it back out of the general fund. It's too late to change it.
That's why that first article's gonna have to be amended down-
Before we even start.
Before we even start at town meeting, yeah. You're gonna start at the 2,87,000.
I mean, if you're running a business, you would go through all the articles and add them up. Didn't do the, didn't say, "Do you want it?"
Not running a business, probably.
Right, I know.
So, didn't last year, we had a PowerPoint where every article, and this would-
And then that would be the total.
But again, you're, you're counting on, and Sevitz is a perfect example, you're counting on the full amount being passed at, at the floor. We chopped it down to 3,500. It takes all the numbers from there on, just puts-
There are some times that vote each individual line item still.
Wow.
A lot. A whole day.
Yeah.
Not necessarily that.
So, we've got the information needed for the articles, right?
Mm-hmm. If we have any questions, ask the rest.
Yep, we should read yours.
I will, yes.
'Cause Toby wasn't here when she was selected. I remember that.
That's right. We didn't give you a whole, and we didn't give you a lot of them anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, information needed for articles, so everybody's all right with that. PowerPoint for topics. What are we talking about? What are you thinking about? What are we doing?
In your packet, you have, if you haven't given it away, the PowerPoints that you asked for. The orange one, if you did give yours away, I hope you have one extra one.
I don't think I did.
Yeah, you gave it away. You have Enwood Hill pictures.
Why are those pictures so, I mean, every picture looks exactly the same except trucks and everything.
It's the progression of the, of the road, Toby, with my truck, so that you can see the width and the, the problem.
Shows how narrow it is.
It does. That's why I put my truck in there.
So, that's one of the, one of the topics we got for PowerPoint that you've got. You've already taken the pictures for it. That's done.
That's correct.
What's number, what's number two?
Well, the first one was the, the sandpit opportunity.
This is the PowerPoint?
Second. Yes, all of these are PowerPoints that you have.
Yeah.
Okay.
The third one is the Northwest Community House.
Which is not a mark.
You didn't say that. I'm talking PowerPoint.
No, I didn't say that.
Information.
No, if you're trying to-
I'm just going to have them available, so that when you, if you talk about it in other business, as you said you were going to, you'd have at least a picture of the building that we're talking about. So, that's why I got them for you. And the fourth one was the budget, and again, we can do it what we did last year. It shows the appropriations, then it shows what the complication, implications of the tax rate, if, and that's completely estimated, because we don't have a grand list that's solid. You won't until later, when current use is actually finalized. So, it's just estimates to just show kind of what you're talking about as things are voted on. But as of last year, as soon as Sevitz came up, it changed every one of them, and so that came really just-
But you know what? Maybe as long as we had a overview to start with, that if you, if we told the voters, "Ride or fun," if you approve, this is your tax rate before you do the article?
We don't know the tax rate, though. You had to be very clear that this is just an estimate. We don't have the final numbers.
But then if you say, "If you were to approve all these articles, this is what it would end up being."
This would be where it's in the-
So, at least you give them a preview, if they did pass it all, what their tax, or what their budget would be.
If they pass $28,000 worth of expenses, it's gonna raise your tax rate by 10, approximately.
Yeah. I think it's good information to have on the fly.
So, I'll do that one again. I didn't print it out for you, but.
Okay, so those four are all gonna be PowerPoint.
That's correct.
Okay, moving on, robo-call.
Well, these are the subjects that you were talking about that are appropriate under other business, if you deem it so, but nobody has taken the authority to, to talk on them. So, you had the robo-call.
What is, what is the robo-call? I wasn't here at the last meeting.
The robo-call is a, such as the school has, to give out information of a road closing for an emergency, such as we had in the middle of town here, to let folks know, if they so choose. They don't have to sign up for it. It's a $1,500 charge for 10 per year calls. So, for 10 calls, it's $1,500.
What if you do fewer than 10? Still pay $1,500?
Yes, that was the minimum. It was $1,500 for up to, to, I think it's up to 15 calls. But we started talking about what we would use them for. We're not gonna, we're not gonna do the weather. We're not gonna do, it, it's gonna be road closings that we, you know, were unpredicted, and something that's gonna really hold up people, such as the West Road was three years ago, to notify that area. And not everybody would be notified, only the folks that are, that are quote-unquote "going to be disrupted." That when the bridge closes, Route 121, when they close that final bridge, they would get a robo-call, and it can come on your, your portable phone. It can come as a text. It can come as an email or a home phone. You can do any or all. It doesn't matter. It doesn't, for up to 1,500. Homesteads is what I-
Was that the school?
They pay a lot more, because they have a lot more need and use. But that system is for schools, and we can't, we can't piggyback that.
So, we couldn't have people subscribe who wanted to get it, but people didn't wanna get it? A subscription only?
Yes, that's explanation for it. So, two pages in is the actual document that you sign. I did not check the box. I thought you should do that yourselves, after you've read the plus, the two statements that you're approving, and then if it passes, then you sign it. And that's the Town Road Bridge Standards Network Inventory. Thank you.
So, you want us to check the?
We further certify that our adopted standards do meet or exceed the minimum required. It's included in June 5, 2019, state-approved template. We do meet those.
We do meet those?
We're trying to meet those. So, yes.
So, we do meet those?
The second one is, we further certify that we do have an up-to-date highway network inventory that identifies location, size, deficiencies, road, road conditions, bridges, causeways, culverts, highway-related retaining walls, and Class 1, 2, 3 town highways, and an estimated cost of repair.
Do we have the estimated cost of repair?
As they need, as they're needed, yes.
What is, Russ, what is the Class 2 roadway program? Is that the one?
Sorry?
The Class 2 road, the Class 2 roadway program?
That's a, yeah.
Is that the program?
That's the structures grant that we, we actually use quite often. In fact, that's paving back Westminster Road, this coming spring.
I will entertain a motion on the annual financial declaration.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion that's been moved and seconded to accept the annual financial declaration. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is not move.
Did you get that, Toby?
Okay, then about four more pages, it's actually the last-
Did you get that?
Pardon me?
Did you get the last vote?
She voted.
I voted, yes.
Okay. I didn't hear any.
Is, are you still talking about the same?
Same documents, the last page. You also have to vote on the annual financial plan for the town highways.
We certify that the taxes, and they raise at least $300, $30 per mile.
Per mile.
That's why I was trying to do the multiple.
So, we are all-
We do.
I'll make a motion that we approve the annual financial plan for the town highways.
Seconded.
Motion's been moved and seconded to accept the annual finance plan for town highways in the town of Westminster. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Point of action.
While we're doing that, if you wanna move on to the item C, I would recommend that we table that.
Yes.
Table for town meeting?
Yes, I might.
The resolution for gun rights in Westminster signing, certainly not really decided yet, so. These places are-
Table until after town meeting.
Yeah. Then I'd like to just, you know, I'd really like to bring it up one more time. There's a lot of information there. Is there any other? So, if that's agreeable to everybody, while you're signing that, is there any other new business to be brought forward at this time? Hearing none, I'll go on to managers' report.
Some quick things. Town hall renovation update. We are, we have two offices that are being renovated at this time. The walls are up, and they're being painted. The floor has been ordered and is on its way. The doors are in, in the building. They're not up, because they're gonna stain them all the same. We had an awful time trying to match woodwork, so they're going to be done in a different location and then brought back, all completed. So, that's where we're at. Should be by the end of the month, two offices completed.
Can we pull the electric key? What do we do with that?
We pull the electric key.
Okay.
And we unplug the extension cords. Sevitz had an informational meetings. They actually had two of them. One was at the Institute, and the other one was at the Westminster West Church. I attended the, the first one at the Institute. I was the only one there. It was one on three.
Did they ever pass that?
They did, yeah.
It was in the, yeah.
It was in-
Actually, I picked it up after the class.
It was in a handout that I gave to you guys a month ago. But anyway, it, it was interesting. They started with the same, same information that they typically do with the student programs. They're very familiar with that. And I brought up our three concerns that we've had going on, which is assisted living, the senior housing combination, and then broadband. And answers weren't as well received as I was hoping. They, they don't do that, none of those three things, but they can lead us in the right direction. They can get us contact information and work with us on that side of it, but not actually dive in and actually come to speak to us, et cetera. They are, that being said, Bobby Kilburn from Brattabro Development Corp. is going to be at your next meeting for the assisted living, senior housing. Broadband survey, I just pretty much told you what I had learned from the first meeting, is that there's many towns with a lot more need than Westminster, but we have definitely areas that need some boosting. So, I think it's, it's not gonna cost the town anything to get part of the feasibility study, so. What's that?
No, I'm just saying, West Village is no.
So, that's why it's worth it.
Yeah.
So, we'd probably get a lot of support there. Select board training opportunity, I've got four cards. Select board training opportunity, I've got four cards, if anybody, five cards, actually, just take one. It's a select board training that's available.
Does piano lessons involve, don't they?
And the last thing is legally posting our roads for wait. There was a seminar, all slated for last Tuesday, because of snow, it was canceled. So, we are, Chuck and I were both going to go because we don't post our roads legally for wait. I just inherited the. I just inherited the sequence, we don't do enough, we don't post it in papers, we don't, what else don't we do, Chuck? There's a sequence of.
Right, we post them, but we don't do it so that it's actually.
Has teeth.
Enforceable.
Enforceable.
That's right.
Great.
You got to put it like three newspapers, you got to, yeah.
One newspaper, one newspaper of choice, but for three weeks running or something, it's a sequence, and we don't know what the sequence is, and so we were really looking forward to the thing, and then it snowed, so. Road foremen's are the ones that they really were trying to draw off to.
It was a huge problem throughout the whole state, so they're, they're putting on these classes throughout the whole state because everybody's running into the same issue with the roads getting destroyed with no consequence. So, we're trying to educate us so that that doesn't happen. And I got an email this afternoon, and they moved it until next week.
Next week, oh, okay.
So, I'll tell you.
It's a state training, yes.
Okay.
What's up?
Lot more home delivery, every town you go to.
Correct.
There is, and fuel companies aren't helping us, and brother-in-law and myself are a perfect example, having the same company deliver a fuel. You'll see him deliver to my brother-in-law on Tuesday and come back to me on Thursday.
Right.
When you're on my hill, you think, there's only two of us, you'd whack us both and go.
Does your brother-in-law work for that company?
Yes. On the propane division, he doesn't have anything to say with this. We've mentioned it, we've called and said, what, what the heck? We're both clients, and we're right there, so why wouldn't you do us both?
According to DMV, DOT, when those, the roads actually fall apart, oil companies can deliver with a one-ton in a skid tank. They're not exempt, rubbish trucks aren't exempt, milk trucks aren't exempt, fire trucks aren't exempt. If there's a way to go around the mud, they have to, that's the law. But we have to educate people.
And the problem is too.
It was going to start with us.
Truck doesn't. I mean, the log, basically, anybody that's logging usually gets in touch with you anyway, so I don't see.
The loggers aren't the problem.
I don't see why the other people feel they shouldn't.
Correct, but last year, there was a ten-wheel oil truck went right up the West Road, fell into the mud, ruts that deep. Of course, everybody out there has a Prius now, so nobody can drive through it anyway, and, no, but it's, that's no joke. So, I said to the sheriff who's sitting right there, he's sitting under the poster, I went, what do you want me to do? Come back to texting. That's why, that's why we need to get educated to do it right.
Okay. What else you got, Russ?
I'm done.
Okay. Boards and commissions, I saw we had a lot of resignation from.
We do, we are going to need to find another candidate that will join our. The Wyndham Regional Commission's representative. Letters in your packet.
He wasn't on it that long, was he?
Couple of years, three years, yeah.
Well, that's not long.
It's a lot of work, it's not just a once-a-month deal, it's, they typically join a subcommittee, and they're part of that.
Right.
Both of them were very, very active, enjoyed it.
Were you going to send him a letter thanking him for his service?
You have to vote to accept his resignation and tell me that, yes, you want to write him a, you want me to write a letter.
Does it have to be a Westminster resident? That particular one?
Yes. Because he was, he just moved to Putney, and he did ask, and they did say, no, it wouldn't be appropriate.
But we can actually write a letter thanking him, we don't have to accept the resignation.
We accept the resignation, and we sent Stephen Dobson a letter of appreciation.
Do you need that as a motion right here?
Toby just did.
Motion's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Stephen Dobson, and direct the town manager to write a letter of thank you to him. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you very much.
I believe we should make a mandate, anybody gets done has to bring in another candidate to take the place.
Let this data go over really good.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the boards and commissions, that's the only thing we had there, right?
That's correct.
We got somebody else, I assume we're going to put that in the gazette. Any other business at this time?
Can I ask one?
Certainly.
Can I have a kind of a structured explanation of the finance department now? I don't understand who's doing, I guess that's a question for Russ. Like, I don't, I direct questions to who I think the right person is, and that, I just don't understand it, that's all.
So, the select board actually took my title, which I got when I became town manager as the Lincoln Tax Collector, and enhanced it, that I collect taxes on the executive side. So, Kelly is the financial officer, without a better title to call her, so she's receiving the taxes, she processes it. We asked Chad.
Hewitt.
Hewitt, thank you, what his thoughts were about making sure that that was appropriate to have that many eyes, and he thought it was a good, good process, so she receives the bills, she codes them, and then Paul and Ally, as being treasurer and assistant, take care of the billing, and they process the checks, and so at least three eyes have seen what goes through the.
So, who is in charge of the financial statements, like the general ledger, like who, like if?
That is the treasurer and NIMRAC, we still hire.
Right, as far as I understand, I'll have to recheck with Penny, she's coming in and helping balance the checkbook, basically, is what she's doing. So, if there's a different definition of what.
Lori always came in and reconciled the checkbook, but she also did the moving of funds from, as I, as, such as that hundred thousand dollars should have been moved, was it moved? In my heart, I think it was, but did it show? Obviously, I'm definitely going to look into that, it should have been moved, and it was given to NIMRAC to do it because we are not.
Well, I think that.
Rehearsed enough to do that.
And I don't want to speak out of total turn with NIMRAC because I have not seen the contract, but I think there needs to be a clear discussion about that, because there is a little bit of a discrepancy between, and full disclosure, I work for NIMRAC, I'm the director of support, so there's a little discrepancy between, I think, us knowing that we need to have like a really.
We don't have a written contract with NIMRAC.
A really complete handle on fund balances and general ledger versus coming in and just doing checkbook reconciliation and checking things over. And that may just be, need to just be clarified, like what it is, because, exactly. Yeah, because, I mean, I had been told that Kelly was the finance officer, that position to me means that that person should be able to be able to tell anybody that walks through the door, like, what's the fund balance of this, what's the, because NIMRAC's in here once every two weeks. So, they shouldn't be relied on as the information giver. I mean, yes, they're obviously a consultant.
We've been counting on the treasurer to do that.
Okay, but he's not, he doesn't have hours, full-time hours here.
That's why Ally is the assistant, so that if somebody came in with a financial question, that that could be answered.
But those are good, those are good. I thought NIMRAC was doing more than what you just said, so.
No, we actually sat down with Ernie to try to hammer this out this spring.
But wasn't that for the Lister stuff, or was that also?
No, this was just on, on the, what we weren't getting.
It was a lot more, longer than that, the Listers was just recently.
Yeah.
But the, but the conversation you had with Ernie for the treasurer slash financial director and what their point was in the, in the process, that was done probably two years ago, if not two and a half years ago.
And didn't get anywhere with them, really.
Well, it should, just, it really should be revisited since personnel has changed at our office.
Yes.
And Penny is awesome, I would never want to do my job without Penny working with me. Her, the level of accounting experience is not as high as what Lori had, so, and she'll tell you that herself, so just make sure that, we need to just make sure that Penny really understands what it is you guys are wanting, and then we work that if it has to do.
And do we have a job description for Kelly's financial officer, part of her job?
You have a verbal reconciliation form of a contract with her, in that she's now receiving taxes, and she, and she codes the bills going out.
Just those two things.
That's it. She can pull up a file, she can, she can.
And she also sent all the taxes out.
Is there a way of coming back?
Yes, we also.
This is not the time to do it, but Russ, is there a way of coming back? I'm always getting confused, of us having a step where you follow the money and who's touching is responsible for it, so you would say that the treasurer.
Nothing comes in or out without at least two or three eyes seeing.
But it follows through that who's accountable to the final end, that this is.
Yeah, I think the, I think the everyday transactions, like you're talking about the segregation of duties, I think that that's all there, I'm not, it's really this.
If I called.
Who was like looking at the audit and saying, okay, this audit actually matches what's in the system, and what do, and give you the chance to sit down with somebody and say, this is what these numbers mean, before you put your signature on it.
I couldn't agree with you more than that.
Yeah, that you need somebody either in-house, or it needs to be made clear to the consultant that you have, that that's going to be an expectation of that.
That responsibility, that if you come in and ask a question, that even if the person that you're asking is not theirs, they would say, that question needs to go over to that person.
Right.
Because that's what they do, and I don't, I'm not so sure I know that.
Yeah, and I was, when I was asking questions this week, I was, I didn't want to step on toes and like ask the wrong person, because this person does it.
Yeah, I think that's really good.
Yeah.
It was fine, I mean, then just send it over.
Okay, any other business to be brought before us at this time?
I would just like to ask if I could get a job, a copy of the job description for the animal control person?
I do not see why not.
Sure.
Wait until the very last minute.
Can you?
How do I get that?
You should, you should be able to go directly to the town manager, and he should.
Well, I did that two weeks ago, and it was going to be put in the mail, and it doesn't happen.
The description was supposed to be put in the mail? I will be, make sure that it gets into the mail.
Get it in tomorrow.
This week.
Well, don't put it in the mail, I'll come get it.
Today's Wednesday, all right. But we'll get one in the mail too, too, so in case you don't, because the weather's supposed to be crappy tomorrow, so. They're not supposed to be very nice, let's put it that way, so. All right, date of the next meeting, February twenty-six, twenty twenty.